On this, I guess, eve of inclement weather, we'll try to go through our agenda as much as we can and get through all the work that's before us. But I ask that you join me in a moment of silence as we begin our meeting. That has been our tradition for a few years, to meditate in your own way about the business that we have before us as a board and as a community and especially as a school system. So if you will, bow with me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Let's stand for our presentation of colors and a pledge of allegiance.
Order, up, left, face, three, then, color. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors.
Thank you. Be seated, please. Begin our meeting tonight with a consent agenda. We have no items under administration, so we'll move on to personnel. Have items B, C, D, and E, the acceptance of resignations, retirements, rehires, terminations, and leaves of absence, the acceptance of classified personnel, approval of licensed personnel, and approval of administrative appointments. Dr. Lassane.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, you have had the opportunity to review the February Personnel Report. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments about personnel?
Thank you.
Thank you. You also have the minutes from January 6th Committee of the Whole Meeting and the January 13th Board of Education Meeting. There are no additions or corrections to those minutes. I ask that we have a motion to approve the consent agenda and the minutes from January.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the recognition portion of the meeting. We have a teacher feature. Dawn.
Let's come back to it. Let's keep moving.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the...
I think it's thinking, so if it starts talking.
Okay. Still need a minute?
We'll come back to it.
Okay. Let's move on then to the Community Schools Award. Suzie Weber.
If it starts, I'll get out of the way real quick. Thank you, Dr. Cash. If you've ever had an experience with a hospice and palliative care organization, then you know that it comes at a time in one's life when there is sadness and loss. It's devastating enough as an adult to lose a parent or a friend, but think about our students when they lose their parent, their sibling, a friend, or their teacher. In 2006, Jill Blackwelder, who was at that time a counselor at South Iredell High School, asked Hospice and Palliative Care of Iredell County for some help. Mrs. Blackwelder wanted to begin a grief group at her school for students who were dealing with the death of someone close to them. And in came LeAnn Darty, hospice social worker, and Lynn Kunkel, hospice chaplain, who had been working with children dealing with grief and life-limiting illnesses since 2005. LeAnn knew students with grief issues manifested their anxieties through poor attendance, less than positive behavior, and their grades were also impacted. Since that beginning session, Rainbow Kids was destined to serve children in many more of our schools. In 2011, with hospice support, LeAnn Darty became the full-time Rainbow Kids Director due to the many children's grief needs in our community. In 2013, more than 269 students were served in all middle and high schools in Iredell County and 40% of our elementary schools. After being screened by their own school counselor, students were served by LeAnn, who facilitated grief support group right in their own building. Rainbow Kids, through their weekly grief group sessions, one-on-one counseling, and grief summer camp, helps children cope in a healthy and appropriate way. These students don't have to go anywhere but to school to receive positive support. And at the close of the 2013 school year, SAP counselors reported 92% of the students participating in grief groups improved in at least one of the attendance, behavior, or grade key indicators. Additionally, not only are these improvements made, but friendships are created among the students, who are all going through the same life-changing experiences. There are many people at Hospice of Iredell County that serve our students. Lynn Kunkel is the chaplain at Gordon Hospice House. Lynn has traveled to our schools on a moment's notice when she was needed by staff or students dealing with a crisis. Shelley Lutman, hospice home care social worker, was hired last year to help facilitate grief groups in the schools also, along with LeAnn Darty. So we are very grateful for their support, and we're very glad they're here this evening to receive the Community Schools Award. And Mr. Rogers, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
I would just like to say a few words that it is such an honor to be a part of this program and to be a part of Hospice and Palliative Care of Iredell County. This year, we're celebrating our first years of service in the community. And with Rainbow Kids helping children to deal with grief, making a positive difference in their life, it's just an honor to be able to serve these children, help tell their stories. And I cannot do this, and Lynn cannot do this, without the support of the Iredell County School System, without the support of the teachers and the counselors who screen these children and get them to us. You guys know what it takes to make a positive difference every day, and that's what we attempt to do. And we love what we do, we do what we love, and I know that you know all about that. And we're just very proud of Mr. Johnson being Superintendent of the Year, Northern Province Superintendent of the Year. It's just very honored to be here, growing up in Iredell County, and to be a part of the system and serving the children.
Thanks for coming to the school, because it's certainly an honor to come in there. It's our privilege to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We still waiting on the teacher feature?
I think we're good. I hope we're good.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go back and get the teacher feature then.
This month, we're going a little outside the box. Instead of featuring a single teacher, we're featuring a whole team of teachers. This month, our teacher feature shines a spotlight on North Iredell Middle School. The teachers at North Middle, along with their blended learning coach Erin Wally, are embracing technology as the wave of the future. They're embracing technology as the wave of them right now. Even ahead of the one-to-one initiative heading their way later this spring, the work of the Impact Grant is already up and running at North. According to Ms. Wally, teachers are becoming facilitators and students are becoming leaders in the classroom, a concept she says is highly effective with this age group. She works directly with the instructional facilitator and teachers to find the best way to make station rotations work in each classroom, understanding that it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. Teachers at North Middle also collaborate and share best practices, not just within their PLCs, but also with other grade levels and throughout the entire school. Teachers at the North Middle Bear Cave have a common philosophy: do what's best for the bear cubs. Their students have embraced technology as a part of the learning process, and so have the teachers. This is one of many reasons North Iredell Middle School was selected as the first school to receive MacBook Airs later this spring as a part of the Impact Grant. Stay tuned for next month's teacher feature as we continue to recognize our outstanding teachers.
Our next item on the agenda under recognitions is Girls on the Run. Dr. Taylor, you filling in for Sherrod?
I am, I am. Thank you. Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, last Monday night, you saw a brief presentation on Girls on the Run and the impact that that program has on our students in grades 3 through 5. Tonight, we'd like to recognize some of our teachers who put in hours beyond their regular school day as volunteers for that program. Right now, we currently have about 30 Iredell Statesville School educators that volunteer their time and energy to work with 238 of our female students in grades 3 through 8 at 11 of our elementary schools and two of our middle schools. Tonight, we'd like to honor their service to the daughters of Iredell County and to recognize the positive impact these women have on the lives and families of the young girls who participate. Dr. Cash, I'll call their names, and if you could please pass out their certificates. Donna Bopri from Celeste Hinkle and Cheryl Holliday from Celeste Hinkle. Hannah Dow at Central Elementary. Kimberly Allen, Selena Curfies, Ashley Westland from Cloverleaf Elementary. And if you could just stay up at the front, we'll get a picture of everyone. Should we call your names? Sarah Divig and Jolene Yurger from Cottle Creek. Tanya Cassidy, Cool Spring. Kelly Hill, Tasha Key, Lauren Wells, East Elementary. Beth Kirsten, Lake Norman Elementary. Couple of these folks had emailed earlier this afternoon and were a little wary of the weather, so they appreciated the recognition, but weren't going to be able to make it. Bobby Shoemaker, Lakeshore Elementary School. Becky Corson, Candace Litten, Scotts Elementary. Jean Andalina, Amy Lynch, Sharon Elementary. Donette Clendenin, Callie Cross, Kimberly Doucette, Jackie Carbo, Megan Patton, Ashley Stillwell, Misty Thompson, Megan Whitmire, Troutman Elementary. Angela Hines, Lisa Casperzak, Chelsea Shins, West Middle School.
Johnson and Ms. Amy Mitchell from Lowe's Companies. Members of the board, is Amy here tonight?
Mallory Lavoy, Mountmore and IB.
I'm not Amy.
We'd also like to recognize Tanya Kumero and Tanya, her husband is actually one of our
Dr. Cash, my name is Chuck Elig. I'm a Market Director of Stores for Lowe's Companies, representing the mountains of
employees, he's the instructional facilitator at Statesville High School, but Tanya actually
Northwest North Carolina. I have with me tonight Mr. Brandon Abbott, the manager of the Troutman Store, Mr. Beau
coordinates the program and works with all of the coaches here in the district. And then Sherrod Lewis, who is the project manager for the I-3 grant, is the volunteer
Shannon, the manager of the Mortford Store, Mr. Billy Ivory, the manager of the Statesville Lowe's Stores.
coordinator that serves on the board as well.
We're proud to present $154,000 to the Statesville Iredell School Systems for tech grants
So we certainly would like to recognize all of them for their hours of service.
and outdoor basketball court. We're very pleased to be a part of the Iredell community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. (Applause).
And gentlemen, if y'all have time, we'd like for you to hang around for a picture. And we're going to recognize each of these schools individually, so you decide when to jump in the photograph. Brawley Middle Schools, Jimmy Dancy here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dancy, come on up. And Debbie Farrell, is Debbie with you? Yeah, you guys come up. And again, you officials from Lowe's, if you'd like to pose with these folks, that would be great. We would appreciate that. Let me tell you a little bit about the grant down at Brawley Middle School. Debbie is the media specialist there, and she wrote the grant proposal for Brawley Middle School. Brawley is very pleased to announce that they did receive $24,000 in the way of technology funding for the school. It will be used to furnish each classroom on the campus with a mounted data projector. Additionally, each classroom teacher will receive their choice of an iPad or an Elmo document camera or equipment that will transform their whiteboard into a smart board. Brawley Middle School is excited to add this technology to their classrooms. Congratulations, Brawley Middle. All right, the next school is Scotts. LeAnn Hall. And LeAnn, you have Calvin with you? Calvin Brown, Assistant Principal? Let me tell you a little bit about the project that's going on there at Scotts. Scotts Elementary is pleased and proud to be the recipient of a technology grant from Lowe's Charitable Education Foundation in the amount of $51,580. We have always dreamed of being able to increase our technology in the classrooms so that our students could be better prepared and to become highly skilled in the area of technology, research, presentations, and all other aspects of 21st century learning. Now this dream is becoming a reality. Scotts Elementary wishes to express our sincere thanks and gratitude to the members of the Lowe's Foundation and to our Assistant Principal, Mr. Calvin Brown, who completed and submitted the application. We will proceed from here with exciting and renewed anticipation of the success of our students. Congratulations, Scotts. All right, next is, next is South Iredell High School, Tim Ivey. Is Tim here? And Karen Van Vliet. Karen is the media specialist at South Iredell High School. She wrote the grant for the school. The project was entitled "Digital Students Need a Digital School." Brain research shows that learners take in more information visually than they do any other sense due to the connected nature of their environment. They comprehend complex graphics better than previous generations because they create and consume most of their data through online content. Currently, South Iredell High School provides an analog educational experience and failing to capitalize on the learning behavior of the current knowledge era. Only 24 of the 80 classrooms are able to provide an interactive learning experience that capitalizes on the connectivity level of this future workforce. Our goal is to provide a more current workplace learning environment through the use of multi-touch interactive whiteboards where students will have the ability to work with peers in a small group setting, connect with technology, bring in more visual and graphics to their learning, and explore endless options in customizing their learning experience. Congratulations, South Iredell High School. And then last is Troutman Elementary School, Kim Crusman. Is Ms. Miller here? Paula Miller? All right. Ms. Miller is a parent at Troutman Elementary School. She's a member of the PTO. She applied for a grant from Lowe's in the amount of $18,000. With this money, a basketball court, including grading, concrete pad, and four basketball goals, will be installed as part of the Troutman Elementary 3 through 5 playground. Congratulations, Troutman Elementary. And in closing, Dr. Cash and members of the board, if there is a better example of good corporate citizenship in Iredell County, I'm not aware of it. So we certainly do want to thank Lowe's for their continued and long-term commitment to education in our community. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next we move then to item E, the 2013-14 Newly Certified and Recertified National Board Certified Teacher Recognitions. Mr. Todd.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, board members, it is my pleasure to present to you Iredell Statesville Schools newly certified National Board Certified Teachers as well as recertified National Board Certified Teachers. In total, we had 16 newly certified and recertified combined. Eight of them are with us tonight. The other eight, for various reasons, couldn't be with us but show extreme gratitude for being recognized and honored by the board this evening. Mr. Shoemaker, would you assist me in handing out certificates? Folks, when I call your name, please come on up, receive your certificate, but remain up here so we can grab a photo of you together. I'll first invite up the newly certified National Board Certified Teachers from South Iredell High School, science teacher Sarah Hawkins. Cottle Creek Elementary, second grade teacher Maria Imbrogno. And North Iredell High School Health Occupations teacher Deborah Wilkerson. The next five teachers are recertified teachers. Joining us tonight are Shepherd Elementary School's PE teacher, Mr. Scott Brown. North Iredell High School Business teacher Patricia Carter. Northview IB Mathematics teacher, Ms. Sandra Davidson. West Iredell Middle School Instructional Facilitator Angela Hines. And Cloverleaf Elementary School Instructional Facilitator Allison Whitaker. Is that everybody? Anybody else here that I missed? Okay. Please join me in applauding these things. I would like to let the board know that going forward for National Board Certification, the national level, they're revamping the whole assessment system. I hope to be back before you in two years to bring you the next class of National Board Certified Teachers, as that is going to be the time it's going to take for them to smooth out the assessment process. Thank you for your recognition this evening.
Next, we have item F, the United Way Fundraiser Presentation. Dawn Creason.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board. Our school system recently completed a special project that was twofold. One, we wanted to help our community partner, United Way of Iredell County, to meet its annual fundraising goal, and we also wanted to find a way to continue to build support for our schools and keep that top of mind, using the Wear Red for Public Ed campaign that many of you guys have seen across our state. Our idea was to design a T-shirt specific to our school district and sell them to our local teachers and community members, with all the profits benefiting the United Way of Iredell County. Thanks to generous support from Atlantic Screen Printing here in Statesville, we were able to keep our costs low and our profits relatively high. Our employees ordered over 400 shirts that they wear each Wednesday, along with their blue jeans, a special perk. And as a result of the success, we're pleased to be able to present to the United Way of Iredell County a check for over $5,000. And I did read an article in the paper last week that their goal was still over $50,000, so this will get them a little more than 10% of the way there. The check is for $55,4140. So I'd like to invite members from the United Way of Iredell County forward, along with a few of our teachers who are wearing their red shirts tonight that we ordered. And also, we thought it would be really cool if presenting the check could be some of the kids here from our school district that benefit directly from United Way. So we've invited members from local Girl Scout troops to help present this check tonight. So if you guys would all come forward, United Way, our Girl Scouts, and then, of course, our teachers.
(Laughter). (Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
I'd just say thank you on behalf of United Way, and even more importantly, on behalf of the 20 agency partners we serve, and even more importantly, on behalf of the 50,000 individuals of last year who received help through those agency partners with education and health across our community. We didn't do what we do to have your support, and we're very grateful for all of you's
Next we have our Public Relations Recognitions. Mr. Johnson. Dawn and Jada, if you guys will make your way to the front here. Jada's way up in the crow's nest, so it may take a minute to get her down here. Dr. Cash, members of the board, each year, public information officers from around the state of North Carolina gather, hold their annual convention and conference, and they also critique each other's work and honor the work that's taking place in the public schools all across our state. Our department of two, pretty small department, but they do very well when compared to the other public information offices across the state of North Carolina. So it's no real surprise when they bring home these awards. They brought home eight Blue Ribbon Awards this year from the annual conference, and those are listed there in your memo for you. The first one is image and identity packets for the Ed Matters Collaborative Materials. The second award was for the Internet Website for the Iredale Statesville Schools that was newly refreshed. Marketing Communication for the Community Action on Senate Bill 236. The fourth award was Marketing Communications for the I Academy, which opened back in August of this school year. The fifth award was Marketing Communications for the 2013 Public Forum Material that we use each year with our elected officials. The sixth award was Marketing Communication for the Marketing Your School Toolkit for Principals. Number seven, Photography for the We Work Together Photo Featured in the Kids First Marketing Handout for Principals, and a special shout-out goes to Scott's Elementary for that photograph. And the last award that they received was the Special Purpose Publication for Crisis Communications Actions that were taken during a situation at one of our schools. So tonight, we just wanted to give a little shout-out to our Public Information Department and honor these ladies for the work that they do. They represent us very well across the state. Next we have Item H, the Special Student Recognition. Mr. Johnson. Let's see, Jimmy Dancy, are you still with us?
Yeah, it's only basketball.
All right. All right, we've got, uh, we've got some teachers from Brawley Middle School, and so they're part of this presentation. If you'll make your way to the front. And Mrs. Campa, is she here tonight?
Yeah.
Good. As they make their way to the microphone, I'd like to just give a real brief introduction to this next recognition. Although this young man is no longer a student in our school system, we, we like to think that, that our students are our students for life. And this young man crossed our path several years ago at Brawley Middle School. His name is Oscar Ivan Martinez Castro. And is he here tonight? Here we go. Come on up front. Yeah, we're gonna show you off just a little bit. Oscar was a student down at Brawley Middle School several years ago, and not only has he overcome some life obstacles that these teachers will tell you about, but he's also been an outstanding student. He recently graduated from the Charlotte Mecklenburg School System and is working on applications and scholarship applications as we speak. So ladies, I'll turn it over to you and let you share Oscar's story with us.
This is hard because I'm so proud of this guy. I cannot tell you how proud I am. I met him when he was 12-years-old, and one of the hardest things I've ever had to do was translate from the doctor to the mom to tell her that her son had leukemia. And then I went home and had to tell his father, who sat there stoic, and he still remembers the day I told him the date. From that point, I got to know him and his family very well, and we want to say thank you to the Brawley School teachers who embraced him, to helped us get through this really tough period. I think the proudest thing I have about him right now is that he has a goal. He's graduated from high school, he's overcome a horrible disease, has gone through some word I won't want to say, and now he wants to be a CPA. He wants to go to CPCC, get his degree there, go into UNCC to become a CPA. I think that's amazing. And from there, he's going to be able to help his family, help his community, and be an inspiration to everybody. So thank you to the Iredale School System for supporting us and putting up with me being such a pain in everybody's tush.[1018.11][1018.11][laughter]
If I can just add on to that, Fabiola actually somewhat, well, she didn't really interrupt our spelling bee, but we were in the middle of a spelling bee and we had to take a break for four minutes because we were televising it and we didn't want anybody to miss anything. So during that four-minute break, Fabiola came in and shared with one of our teachers what was happening with Oscar, and immediately the Brawley family surrounded this family. We went as far as providing Christmas for the family. Oscar, when he was first diagnosed, was sleeping on an ear mattress. We went in while they were at chemo one day and put together a bunk bed set, and Oscar came home to his own bed.
With walls.
With walls, because he was in the dining room on the ear mattress. So this has just been an inspiration for all of us that have been involved.
What many people do not know is that Oscar's mother also helped families in our school who had great loss and who lost their homes in a fire. She came forward and brought a contribution to help them in the midst of all that they were going through. So it was definitely a two-way street, not only all the effort and the, the sweet disposition this young man brought, but also the fact that his mother was so involved in trying to look out for others too. So we have very much appreciated them at Brawley.
And I'll just add a final word, that we are all very proud and honored to be part of your journey and your success, and we can't wait to see what you do from here on out.[1124.61][1124.61][applause]
Ladies, if you'll, if you'll stay up front there, we do have a certificate for Oscar, Thank you all for sharing your time with us tonight to make this honor. Next, we have Item I, the North Carolina Superintendent of the Year, have Mosley Architects represented here for that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a privilege to be here with you tonight, and first of all, before I get started, I just want to say how much Mosley Architects has appreciated our relationship with, with Iredale Statesville Schools over the years. It's hard to believe that it's been 12-years since Third Creek Elementary School and, and the accomplishments of that, but we've, we've enjoyed our relationship working with you all very much. And as I thought about all the years when we were designing schools and you were writing me checks, it is a privilege this time to give you a check back. So, um, where, years ago, Mosley Architects came up with a way, we were searching for a way of recognizing and giving back to education in North Carolina. So we developed a, a scholarship program that would go to the school district of the recipient of the Superintendent of the Year. And I don't know if this is, Brady, you may know if this has ever been done before in the state, but to have back-to-back Superintendents of the Year from the same area is, either you all hire really good superintendents or you make really good superintendents, but that's, uh, that's quite a, an accomplishment. And Brady, we're very proud of you, as I know the school district is as well. With that, we have a check that, Brady, if you'd like to come down, I'd like to present to you.
On behalf of Mosley Architects, we would present this check to Iredale Statesville Schools in recognition of the accomplishment of Brady Johnson and, and overacknowledge what you've accomplished and what you give back to the state in education.
Thank you. Dr. Cash, if I might add something real quickly. That award actually should be entitled "School System of the Year" in North Carolina. On the day that I went to Raleigh for my oral interview, I didn't know what to expect. I took one sheet of paper with me that day, and, and you've got a copy of it, audience, if, if you've got a copy off the, the desk out in the hallway. And so when I went in to talk to this group of folks, I, I just told them, "Look at the performance of our district," and, and I said, "This has absolutely nothing to do with me. I'm not real sophisticated, and I'm certainly not very polished, but I work with some really incredible people, and they have gotten some amazing results for the kids of this county, and they do it with very limited resources." So I'm glad there's some teachers here tonight because from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you to you because you guys are in the trenches doing the work every day, and look at what you've accomplished for the kids in our county. Thank you very much.[1395.65][1395.65][applause] Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Guess we'll move on then to the non-consent agenda. We have the first item, is Making Proud Choices Sustainability Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, and members of the school board. We are here tonight to discuss setting up a task force to review the sustainability plan we have for the Making Proud Choices curriculum. If you recall, the Making Proud Choices curriculum is one part of a $4 million, five-year grant from the, federal grant from the Office of Adolescent Health. I just want to review that the Making Proud Choices does follow the North Carolina State Standards from the Healthy Youth Act, which changed the delivery of sex education to comprehensive sex education back in 2009. These are some of the key facts that are in the law that requires our teachers, that are required of our teachers to teach. You'll also notice that stated in the law that the materials should be age-appropriate. The information conveyed during instruction shall be objective and based upon scientific research that is peer-reviewed and accepted by professionals and credentialed experts in the field of sexual education, and that is exactly what the Making Proud Choices curriculum does. Some research that we have from 2008 to 2012 shows that our teen pregnancy rate has gone down from 318 teen pregnancies to 199, and of course, you know, I always say, that's even one too many. We've also dropped our pregnancy rate from 56.2% in Iredale County to 37.1%. Why Making Proud Choices? Well, first of all, the curriculum is medically accurate and evidence-based. The Center for Disease Control stipulated that it was classified as one of the best curriculums. They have a, a level of non-compliant, good, and best. It will provide our health educators with a scripted curriculum. Right now, we have a standard course of study, but the curriculum delivery is left up to the individual classroom teacher. It is also based on social learning theories, and it focuses on how unwanted pregnancies and STDs can affect students' goals and dreams. Just a quick review of our student and parent survey. We did a survey of students a year or more after the program, and one of the highlights I want to point out is the third, fourth one down, which shows that in our student survey, 98% of our students reported that participating in the class helped them understand the risks of STDs in pregnancy. We also surveyed 200, and we surveyed parents, we had 235 responses. At that time, we had had 1,700 students take the class, so that is a response rate of 14%. And here are the questions that we asked. You can see that 95% of our parents said that participating in the Park class helped them understand the, was a valuable experience. The next one was that 88.5% said that it opened up lines of communication between myself and my child. 83.9% said that their students shared what they learned in the program, and when asked, "When should the program begin?", overwhelmingly, 75% said this information should be given in the middle school years. So today, we are here to discuss the possibility of our sustainability plan, which would be to look at the Making Proud Choices curriculum by a task force that would give their input into any kind of modifications or changes so that we can institute it during the school day in 9th grade health.
We discussed this at length last Monday night at our Committee of the Whole Meeting, and I'll ask board members to contribute to the discussion tonight regarding the task force that we discussed that would involve your community members, both, at this point, pro and con about the plan. And I would just ask that everyone here, for those that, that may not be aware, with the state does have a law that was passed in 2009 requiring some form of sex education to the students, and what the Park Grant attempts to do is to provide some equity in that program of learning and the teaching presentation of the program to the students so that all students in all high schools receive the same education administered in the same way. So I, at this point, I'll, I'll open for discussion among board members regarding the establishment of a task force to review this so that we can see how the Park Grant program compares, or the Making Proud Choices part of that grant compares to the program that we already have now existing in the high schools, in middle schools.
Do you know how many people you'll put on a task force?
No. We haven't really thought about that far yet. Once we get approval to set it up, I think, I guess we'll discuss that.
And you'll have that, the makeup of that would be, of course, community members, staff, students?
Possibly. We could have students, parents of students... We could have students, parents of students, especially middle school and high school parents. We would like for the people that are on the task force to actually go through the eight-hour curriculum so that they get an idea of the flow rather than picking out module here or module there, so they see the flow of the curriculum first. And then we would be able to go through each module of the eight-hour curriculum and then decide what might need to be modified to meet community standards so that we could come to a consensus on being able to have the program during the ninth-grade health class. And again, it is only a small portion of the, portion of the ninth-grade nine-week health class, but it would be consistently delivered no matter where the students went to school. Right now, we don't really have that consistency.
How long do you think the, it will take the task force to come up with a, with a solution?
I think we should be able to have a solution before the beginning of next year, school year.
So the task force then would meet, I guess, if we approve something tonight, then they would meet from now until?
Their work is done.
The first of August or something like that?
Right, yeah. Mm-hmm. And then we'd have something to present back to the board on what modifications they have suggested, if any.
And if we wait until August, will that, will that be too late to incorporate that curriculum?
We have one more year of grant funding, so it would not be too late. That would give us first semester to do some intensive training with our present health teachers. And then we would be able to pilot it on a small scale in the second semester. And so we could be ready to roll once grant funding is over, but we would be able to use those grant funds to do the training piece. So it would be at no cost to the school district to continue this program.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Rogers?
Mr. Chairman, I've already made my objection to Making Proud Choices clear, so we're not going to rehash all that tonight because that's not the topic. It's about forming the task force or the study committee. At first, I thought the idea of a study committee seemed like a great idea that would ensure that all of our concerns are being heard. But after the Committee of the Whole meeting last week, I came away with, quite frankly, more questions than answers regarding the sustainability requirements of the Park Grant and the direction that will be given to this task force. I wonder, especially after last week, how could we have accepted a $4 million grant and not know what the sustainability requirements were from the federal government? And this board often discusses how very little authority we have, so why are we going to allow the federal government to dictate essentially what sex education curriculum we're going to teach in our classrooms? If the goal of the task force will be to modify Making Proud Choices to make it less objectionable, then I cannot support the task force. We were repeatedly told that it must be taught with fidelity and that those who object are just taking small parts out of the curriculum out of context. If the curriculum has to be modified in such a manner as this, then the study data that's cited to prove its effectiveness is essentially null and void. If it will require this much effort to modify Making Proud Choices, then what does it tell us about its content to start with? Mr. Chairman, even if the task force recommends changes to the curriculum, the changes still must be approved by the developer. Folks, we are the duly elected and sworn members of the Iredal Statesville Schools Board of Education, and unfortunately, no matter what we do, we're not going to make everyone happy. But we are elected to make decisions. While all government agencies should be concerned about fiscal responsibility, and I believe that we are, we should not base this decision solely on the fact that the Making Proud Choices curriculum is already paid for. That's been one of the selling points. A small cost savings is not worth the long-term cost to our students. We have very knowledgeable health teachers already employed by Iredal Statesville Schools, some of which have already written their own curriculum. Why should we not allow these teachers who work in our system to develop a curriculum rather than purchasing a program, actually, it's already been purchased, written by someone in Chicago or Philadelphia or New York who knows absolutely nothing about our students? And they know nothing about the standards in our community. I might get in trouble for this next part, but so be it. This is from Romans 16, verse 17 and 18. "I urge you brothers to watch out for those who call divisions and put obstacles in your way that are contrary to the teaching you have learned. By smooth talk, they deceive the minds of naive people." And then the second quote from the Bible is the Second Timothy 4, verse 2 and 4. "For the time will come when men will not put up with sound doctrine. Instead, to suit their own desires, they will gather around a great number of teachers who say what their itching ears want to hear. They will turn their ears away from the truth and turn aside to myths." And the last quote I'll leave you with is from President Theodore Roosevelt, and he said, "To educate a person in the mind but not in morals is to educate a menace to society."
I would like to make one comment back that I haven't heard anything presented personally or read anything that addressed moral value. It's really more that, as I read it, something that's educational to the students to help them try to understand the risk of sexual activity as it regards pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases. The other thing that I want to be careful we as a board don't do is make a major decision about a policy that's required by state law, first and foremost, because I think it's our intent to follow the law. You know, we've got some discretion on how we follow the law, but I think there are some members of the community that may be insinuating that we not follow the law and not provide this education. I think first, that would be very detrimental to the students. In terms of trying to let emotions stay out of this as much as we can and look objectively at the question we have before us, I feel like we have not spent time yet listening to those people, and I know they're out there, who are very positive about this program. And as a physician that tries to look objectively at issues that are presented to me, I'm having a hard time being put in position to make a decision about this particular program when we haven't really reviewed both sides of the, of the equation. So I, that's the idea I had, you know, when we discussed the task force last week, was at least it's a starting point, it's still a discussion point. It's not an end-all, say-all about which program we do and how we may tweak the program. But I feel like we have not, as a board, objectively looked at this from both sides of the issue.
In the packets that you have in the folders are some letters of support from various members of the community and teachers beside, there'll be other people speaking tonight in favor of the program. But you, in the packets that you got, those are for people that could not make it tonight that wanted to give their support. There's some very compelling stories.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, and I do have a tremendous amount of respect for you, I'm not advocating breaking the law or not teaching the law. We're following the law now currently as written. There's also nothing in the law that allows us to teach students how to make sex fun and pleasurable. That's in the curriculum. I could go on and on. I sent each of you the issues I have with it. It's not one module, it's not one sentence, it's not taking stuff out of context. I'm not going to read it tonight. I probably should, but I gave each of you what I had written about it, so you can review that if you haven't already, but...
I think you're seeing two completely differences of opinion. And I said last Monday night that I personally don't think that the seven of us ought to be the last word on this. I suggested the task force because I think it will bring the community together, give an opportunity to look at the curriculum, make changes, and then you'll bring a recommendation back to us. I think that's the fairest way to do this.
Well, let's, let me make that comment, too. That was my assumption after last Monday night's meeting, was that we were going to get a task force together and we were going to look at all the pros and cons of the Park program and the, the program that we are now doing in the public schools in the ninth grade by our health education teachers. All that is happening at this time, there's a lot going on, and we have a lot of information out there. What this does is to get more information out there, pro, con, up, down, who decides whatever. But the task force could bring together the good things, the bad things, the up things, the down things, is the way I look at it. Now, I don't, I don't look at it like it's a bad thing, I look at it like it's a good thing. We get some good people together, sit down, and see what it is that we like about the program, what we don't like about the program, and pick and choose. Now, that was, that was the idea. I've made statements about this forever. And people that know me in the background, my background is biological, and it's very simple. I'll go, he went, Mr. Schumaker, that I just love to death, love his statements. He went to his bottom line, which is a good bottom line. Let me go to this bottom line. I have a pad here, okay? Now, if you'll put your name and address and email and directions to your house and telephone number on this pad, then when a young student and a young girl and a young boy come to the Department of Social Services and says, "I'm in trouble, what do I do now? I have nothing, except I know that I'm expecting." Now, if you've put your name on this pad, we would contact you, I would contact you from the Department of Social Services and say, "I have a young student in this county that needs help. So what I'd like for you to do is to take care of that student from now on, from now until the time of delivery and after that delivery until that child is 18, and that's roughly $250,000." Now, if you put your name on this pad and you decide to do that, when you get the responsibility of that first child, hindsight is going to be miraculous. You're going to have wished for every single solitary way to have prevented that. How could I have prevented that? Could I have had a program in the ninth grade, sixth grade, fifth grade, second grade? Could I have had every teacher talking about it? Could I have, what could I have done? Could I have shown a film? Could I have demonstrated something? Could I have been in their classroom? Could I have gone to that school? Could I have personally talked to every single student in this county? Could I have done that to have prevented that one person coming to me and asking me for help? Now, if the figures she presented a couple of weeks ago were true, there were 175 of those in this county last year. That's 175 individuals that are coming in under really tenuous circumstances, I would bet, with very little support. Now, if your name is on that pad, you're going to think about how you could have prevented that. If this program can prevent one, especially 165 or 175, then it's something to think about. If there are parts of it that could prevent one or 175, it could be worth it. If parts of what we're already doing, together with what that is, now, I know the crux of this, the crux has to do with abstinence. I think you're on two different planes. Abstinence is a great thing, but when they have gone past abstinence, you need some information. And this program... This program and the parts of this program can help to give that information. Is it blunt? Probably. Is it upfront? Probably. Is it something you didn't talk about last year? Probably. But if you could prevent one, your hindsight will be miraculous, miraculous. So that's what we're dealing with, and that's the decision.
Personally, you know, I don't have a problem with sex ed. I believe, you know, we need to do that in the schools, we need to teach them the basic biological parts of the body, how to prevent pregnancy, how to prevent STDs. But where do you draw the line in the sex ed curriculum? You know, it would be, in a perfect world, if we just taught sex ed, there would be no pregnancies, but that's not reality. This curriculum, to me, steps over a line that I just don't think that this county is ready for. And what I understand with, with the task force, too, is that it's either going to be the pro-Park grant or it's, or it's going to be back to what we're doing now, which to me sounds like it's adequate. Is that not correct? I mean, it's...
I think that's the question.
And I don't, and, and, if I can understand, if you'll just answer one more time, the task force will not be able to change the Park curriculum that much. I mean, maybe tweak it a little bit, but not, not much at all, is what I understood.
I think that basically whatever the task force agrees upon could be presented as a modification. I don't think our hands are going to be tied to so many changes or whatever. I think the key is that we have a framework, and what's not happening right now is there is no framework. There really isn't a curriculum. There's a list of essential standards and each teacher who's, some are better trained than others to deliver that curriculum, some are more comfortable to deliver that curriculum. So we're not getting the consistency of the message. And that's what this program would do because it would allow the students to be, or the teachers to be trained in a scripted curriculum that says, "This is what you say, this is what you do, this is the video you show, these are the video processing questions, these are the role plays that you would work on refusal skills." So it's very scripted, which with some modifications for community standards, I think, would be a benefit because of that consistency. So any student in our high school would get the same factual, scientific, research-based message. And, you know, I think the modifications would be what the task force would come to a consensus about.
But we, we would not be free, or the task force would not be free to redesign their own curriculum?
I'm not sure about that. Like, as I told you, March 6th is when I go to my sustainability meeting. And like, we have time. You know, we started this process early so that we would have time. And so if we, you know, want to, I think that it would be a good first step to get a group of people together to look at the curriculum and see, you know, whether it's something that, you know, a majority of people can live with.
This, this community has taken some bold steps and brave, courageous steps in many areas, especially related to the school system over the last few years. And we've made great strides in many areas. Students have performed much better than they ever have in the past in many areas. I just don't want to see us be scared to tackle a subject and look at it objectively from both sides of the issue so that together we can come up with what is best for our community. I mean, my vision about this, and I'm one individual on this board, but my vision for this task is that we sit down, I mean, apparently, people felt that our present system of educating this area was not adequate. And we were looking for something to try to improve that, make it more equitable and across the, the different high schools. And this was what we had an opportunity to, to review and look at. We've reviewed that, there's been some objections raised, maybe they're legitimate, maybe they're not. I mean, maybe, well, I... they're legitimate, maybe they're not. I mean, maybe, well, I know that we're not ever going to have an issue probably where we don't have differences of opinion. But I don't want one side of a difference of opinion, uh, to dictate what the whole community does or what the system does. What I would like to see is, and I thought that's what we accomplished last week, was the idea of a task force that was made up of people from, at least at this stage, both sides of the issue, that were at least objective, uh, would look with objective, open minds at what's out here, look at the present program compared to what we're already doing, look and see what it is this community needs, what would be the best program. If it can be fixed to fit under the umbrella of the Park Grant regulations, fine, that will save us some money in the long run. If they look at it, make some adjustments that would be suitable for our system and for our kids and for our community, and it doesn't fit under the Park Grant, that's fine too. But it's, at least it's an opportunity to look at how we can best educate this subject to all our kids in an equitable manner. I mean, that's what I thought our role was. And, you know, it may or may not fit under the Park Grant. And, uh, but we won't know that till we look at it objectively from both sides.
Well, in three and a half years, we've had twenty-eight-hundred students go through the program. Parents have transported them, actively signed them up, and we have not had any parental complaints. So I think that is...
I'm curious to know how many of those twenty-eight-hundred parents actually read the curriculum in detail like I have. Okay, wonderful. But if, if the program is that strong, and that's what I want to do, is look at this without emotion as much as we can. I know it's an emotional subject for everybody, and everybody's got ideas on how they want to teach this to their own children. But I want us to try to look at it from, our role as a board is to be objective. I want to make sure that we've looked at both sides of this i- issue as completely as we can, and if the program is as strong as it's been presented to us, it will prevail. I mean, I have no doubt it will prevail. If there are weak areas in there that are not suitable for the public, I think a good task force will bring that out, and it'll bring it up for discussion. So I would advise whoever, uh, comes in and leads the task force, that they, they remain objective too, and we're not coming into this, in my mind, with an answer already preconceived. I mean, that, we wouldn't have any reason for a task force if we did that.
Right. And remember that parents would always have the option to opt out. For whatever curriculum is decided, they have that option right now in the North Carolina Healthy Youth Act Comprehensive Sex Education Curriculum. That is an option for parents. We have very few parents opt out.
And I know I'm a dreamer and I'm, I'm an idealist, you know, so I would go in, I would, I think that's great for the community to know that that opt out or opt in, whichever way we do, is always the parental choice. I mean, it's the parental choice even in the present, uh, program under the state law. The parents have the final decision, and nobody is asking to take that away. But what I, my goal would be, as the dreamer in here, uh, and the idealist, is let's come up with a program where all the parents, uh, will want their children to be in it. I mean, let's do something, and I think this community's capable of that, to come up if, but we have to be able to look at it objectively, you know, from both sides of the issue. And, and if we do it right, we can come up with something that's agreeable to everybody, I believe.
I do too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'll, if everybody's about three, I need to probably say a couple of things too, because you're looking for somebody with a positive on this swing. Um, I was blessed, and I've raised three sons, and then I was blessed with a daughter later in life, but as, uh, John and Charles and I, three, all became widows, uh, I said and told a lot of people, if I had my daughter first, I wouldn't have any more children. But, uh, she has been a challenge to me, and, um, she took the program. My daughter, and I guess on one of the board, has taken the program. She took it when she was in ninth grade at West Irel, and I took her back and forth to her classes, and, uh, now she's a junior. And, uh, thank goodness, she has her, wears a ring, and she says she practices abstinence. And her group that's with her, there's about thirteen, and they come to our house, and they all seem to be very well-adjusted. Um, they do a well ju, a good job in what they do. Uh, they're, she's well-educated, I think she's about top twenty-five percent of her class. And I am a single parent, and I've had a lot of grandparents, her, her mother's, um, mother and my mother have helped a great deal. And I have an aunt that has stepped in on this. And the program is, the statement says here, "It was a valuable experience for my child." And I asked my daughter to come tonight if she wanted to bring some of her friends, but they're at North Irel at my grandson's last middle school game. They're playing a championship, so she went there tonight. So, uh, she's well-rounded, and, uh, so far, she said, when she, I asked her about the program, and, and Brian and I've talked about this, and I've read it, and, uh, there's probably some issues in there that I don't really agree with, but she said, "Dad, the whole time we took the program, the instructors," and I, sorry, I didn't write down both of them's names, but, uh, she said, "They presented it to us and said, 'Anytime you do not feel comfortable, you do not have to take this or do this. You can opt out of this, and you can leave or take it and have it signed.'" My parents can sign it off. So they were given the choices. So I want to stand up for you and your staff and the people who've done their job, that the school system did what they were supposed to do, and this is her third year in high school. So, that's the positive side. I've talked to a lot of people in the audience, and believe me not, when we look out there to y'all sometimes, these lights are real bright, and we can't see a lot of y'all. So we're not trying to squint or, or hold y'all, but not looking at you. But, uh, and I've talked to a lot of them. So, the problem, and she went through the program, and her pos, her experience was positive. She said, "There were some things that embarrassed me," but she said, "They didn't make us do these things." So, that being said, my daughter's been through it, and she had a good experience about it, and so far, she's a junior, and I'm not expecting any grandchildren from her for a long time, I hope. So, um, I do have five grandchildren. I think y'all did a good job, and I don't know whichever way our board wants to go, but, uh, I'm not sure our big task force or a lot of people, sometimes you get too many and it becomes a gang. I don't want that to happen, because we do have a good system. And, so, we're doing a good job, and, um, with that said, I'll say no more, Mr. Chairman, and however we want to vote, whatever. So, but thank y'all. Appreciate everybody's time involved. I wish everybody, I look out in the audience and I say, "Wow, I wish our stadium was filled every night like this with a courtroom when we had something, just any issues." I wish that you would all come and support the school system, be here, uh, not just for teacher recognition, but anytime we have something coming up. So, thank y'all for being here tonight.
I'll open up for the pleasure of the board, whether we make a motion to proceed on with the task force, or if we decide not to go that route. I've always asked people if they, uh, have objections to what has been proposed before, what is a better solution? You know, we're always open to better solutions. So if, uh, if, if what we've brought forth and discussed from last week is not appropriate, then, then I'll, I'll open it among the board members to discuss what is a better option, so that we can solve the issue for the community and the students.
You know, I read some of the curriculum, and I liked the role play, you know, a lot of the role-playing parts, I thought it was very constructive. Um, I think, though, the only way that I'd support the task force is if one of the options is that we design our own curriculum, that is not the Park Grant, you know, or that we go back to doing what we're doing, you know, but, you know, have these three choices. We design our own, we use the Park Grant, or we go back to doing what we were doing. Um, that's the only way I'll support the task force, I think.
Let's let the task force do their work. I will say publicly at this particular point, I'm not ready to vote one way or the other. I want to see what the community comes up with, and then we'll go from there.
I think the issue for us tonight as a board is whether to proceed with development of a task force to look at this program.
I'll make the motion that we proceed to formulate a task force to look at the Park Grant and the study of sex education in our ninth grade and whenever, and let them bring their recommendations back to us.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I'm like, Ms., I'm like Ms. Bonham. I'd just like to know how many, what, I don't want to get, I mean, a gang. I like to have a good number. If we're going to have eight, ten, one from each high school, or what can we go with this? I don't...
Well, so we don't get the cart before the horse. Um, I mean, I, because I want, the board members don't understand this, we don't, can't expect anybody else to. So, uh, uh, I mean, I think the motion, and I can be corrected here...
We were thinking about fifteen.
Okay.
Um, and also utilizing the services of Piedmont Mediation to facilitate the discussion, so it wasn't one side or the other.
Okay, okay. And I never got an answer about, would designing our own curriculum be part of this task force?
I think what we could do is our first, uh, order of business would be to look at what we have as the sustainability plan. So look at Making Proud Choices, and if there's, uh, so much that needs to be changed, um, then we could look into, you know, making it our own curriculum. You know, there's a lot of money invested in those curriculums. I'd love to be able to use them with modification, um, because I think it would standardize, standardize the instruction. The, um, the present, uh, health education is basically whatever a teach, however a te, that individual teacher decides, they're going to teach the standards. And so that's why it varies. There's no consistency, um, from one teacher in a, in a school or another. So, the training that would be a part of the sustainability plan would be the benefit to using the Making Proud Choices curriculum and following the sustainability plan, because included in that would be some intensive training for our health educators, so they were all on the same page, similar to the training that we provided for our facilitators before they began delivering this curriculum. But certainly, if it, if there were so many things in the curriculum that didn't work, I'd love to see us come out of this with a standardized curriculum. I'd prefer it to be Making Proud Choices, because we have a great track record with it. We know the students, um, like it, the activities that they do keep them up and moving. It's not just sit and get. Um, and I think that, you know, it has a lot of benefits. Whether we can modify it to be more to our community standards, certainly.
Does that clarify the motion, or do we need further clarity? I mean, I think, from what I'm hearing, the motion, Mr. Kelly, who made the motions, feel free to, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you designed the wording of the motion so that we would give as much leeway to the task force as we can, being careful not to tie their hands, uh, going either pro the Park Grant, Making Proud Choices, versus our own program versus... I mean, it's really right now, as I'm hearing the motion, uh, it's totally open for that task force to, to look at all issues, all sides of this issue about sex education for the high schools and, and middle schools, bring this back to us as a recommendation. The board still will reserve its right to make the final decision on whether it accepts their recommendation, or whether it gives us information, just like the PDSA approach that we all use. It will be information back to us. If we need to tweak that, and it still doesn't fit what the community seems to want or feel like it needs, then that at least will be information and data that we can use to help us move forward in, in the direction that we feel like we need to go at that point. But right now, I think the motion is to leave the task force open, so that they can do the work we really ask them to do without having their hands tied. And I think the board would, trying to be nice about this, but I'm just, I'm trying to be the speaker for the board, uh, would, uh, feel more comfortable if you, as part of this, uh, grant, uh, director, will allow that task force to work without, uh, feeling like they're being pushed toward one area of those three or the other. I mean, it needs, for the task force to function and be beneficial back to this board, we need to know that they are objective and are free to look at this, uh, to make their, their recommendation, not the recommendation they're told to make.
Right. And that was our, that was our plan, that we would use our facilitators to, uh, do the eight-hour course for the task force members, but then we would remove ourselves from that and allow Piedmont Mediation to a neutral party, um, to work on the consensus.
And we have used Piedmont Mediation in the past on this board to help resolve, help us investigate, evaluate, and, uh, resolve issues in the past. So they have been very credible to work with. And I think, I can say from my own personal experience in working with them, that they would not allow any member of the task force, even the leader of a task force, to, uh, to sway the group in one direction or the other.
And that's why we thought that would make good sense.
They, they will preserve the, uh, the objectivity. So, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion regarding the motion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye. Let's see, raise a hand so we can count for sure. Okay, one, two, three, four. Any ayes? No. Okay, so four to two. So you can, uh, the motion passes, so, uh, we'll proceed with development of a pas, a task force then.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Thank you, board.
Okay, next we'll move on to item B, the four-year teacher contract selection process. Dr. LaSane?
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board. We discussed last week the four-year teacher contracts process, and you know that this is related to Senate Bill 402, and I would like to just take a minute to review some of the key steps, um, that are part of the process from Senate Bill 402 and the directives that we have received from the state. Basically, the legislation from the state outlines three phases for the ending of tenure. Phase one began with the two thousand and twelve, um, with the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen school year, which that provision stated that anyone who did not previously have tenure would not have an opportunity to get it, even if they were already in the pipeline. We are currently in phase two, where the superintendent has been asked to evaluate all employees with three or more years' experience who are proficient across all standards on their evaluation instrument. And from that pool of candidates, twenty-five percent are to be selected to receive four-year contracts. As you've heard previously from me, that amounts to approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-six teachers out of this district that we would be able to offer four-year contracts to. Those determinations must be made by June the thirty of two thousand and fourteen. The third part of Senate Bill 402 is that tenure would be eliminated for all on July first, two thousand and eighteen. Senate Bill 402 is part of the, um, biennial budget plan of the General Assembly. And with that four, with the acceptance of that four-year contract, if offered one, is a five-hundred-dollar salary increase each year, for which the funding only currently exists for next fiscal year. You will remember, we shared, um, last month, the survey results. We did administer a survey to the school district for which we had an outstanding response from our teachers. From that survey, less than twenty percent indicated that if offered a four-year contract, that they would accept one. Um, there was forty-some percent that said they absolutely would turn down one, and there were, um, forty-some percent who were undecided. Per the memo that you received last week, I would just like to review quickly the evaluation data, um, that was not accompanied in your packet this week. But you will remember, there were five criteria that were set up for first review, and those were based on responses from our Teacher of the Year forum, as well as all of our teachers in that survey. The criteria included evaluation data, which would be the top-rated, weighted item, seniority and longevity, which would be second, and then leadership, collaboration, and discipline, you know, whether or not there were any disciplinary reprimands for that individual, were the last three level-one criteria. You will remember also us sharing with you that as a result of the use of our Teacher of the Year forum, our teachers very creatively came up with collaboration as an additional criteria, just because of their concerns for the journey that we have made as Irel Stateful Schools. They wanted to make sure that whatever built-in competition is in this legislation would not sacrifice the collaboration that we have as a district. Second-level criteria presented to you included EVOs data and attendance data, and we shared some of the concerns with that. And if there was a tie to a third level, then the... And if there was a tie to a third level, then the district would look at advanced degrees and national board certification. So, today, we ask that you provide us with a vote about the use of this criteria in order for us to meet the requirements of Senate Bill 402. Are there any questions regarding the model that has been presented?
I knew at the age of nine that I wanted to be a teacher, and I have spent the better part of almost 50 years doing that. I've been a member of this board for almost eight years, but I have spent the better part of that time teaching middle, middle school kids. So, I guess I'm here to say tonight that I'm a card-carrying, red-shirt-wearing shirt, classroom teacher, and that's all you're ever going to make out of me. I have a real problem with this. Lana Drinkard, where are you? Lana and I have, we go back at least to 1750, I believe. I taught most of her children, and she might remember some about the story I'm about to tell. One afternoon, five or six of us was sitting in the teacher's lounge, and I think we had gotten into some kind of political discussion, so on and so forth. The principal, being an African-American and realizing some of the pitfalls that he had endured during his teaching career, walked in the room, closed the door, and he said to those of us sitting there, he said, ladies and gentlemen, he said, "I want to protect your right of free speech and free expression, but always remember, as a public employee, sometimes what you say publicly can come back to haunt you in the form of retaliation." I've never forgotten that. So, I wrote an article in the paper this past Sunday. I don't know whether, I don't know how angry I really was when I read all of the stuff that was coming out of the North Carolina General Assembly. I'm concerned about vouchers, I'm concerned about not only the ten, the tenure issue, but everything else that comes with it. Our teachers have, I believe, has not had a raise since 2008. That's a, that's a big, that's a real issue. But I'm not condemning idle statesful schools for the...